Next up, we have H.R.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Marsha Green Jones and I'm the Acting Deputy for Human Resources. With me today, can everyone hear me? With me today are Deputy Human Resources Director Brian Albert, Maria Agilakis, Cecilia Leary, Sheila Pate, and Dr. George Hayes. Our Director of Medical Services and other members of my senior management team, I am pleased to provide you with a testimony on the Office of Human Resources Fiscal Year 2017 Operating Budget. So I'll start off with a few initiatives. Supporting the business needs of the city of Philadelphia, OHR has initiated a number of programs which are customer-focused and also focused upon improving efficiencies. In FY 15 and 16, the benefits office was successful in meeting the federally mandated deadline of March 31st for distribution of over 30,000 1095 Cs to active, retiree, and terminated associates. We initiated a wellness newsletter to encourage employees to improve their wellness participation as well as to address wellness questions and issues. We're conducting monthly luncheon learns which thus far have actually focused upon employees knowing their numbers. As we all know, well employees also mean presentee-ism in the workplace. Also in 2016, we've actually initiated IVF as a benefit which introduced a $20,000 life cap. Fifteen thousand of those dollars were distributed to medical and 5,000 K was distributed to RX prescription benefits. The percentage of civil service exams held for FY 11 actually has improved. In FY 11, we actually only proceeded and made 30% of these on time. We've moved thus far in FY 17 to 95.7% of those exams being arranged on time. The average time of establishment of lists compared to the closure date in FY 08, it was 85 days from the date of announcement. Today, in FY 15, it was 45.3 days. And for the first half of FY 16, that decreased to 42 days. We meet annually, we meet twice a year with departments to plan workforce hiring and planning needs. In FY 15, we received 63,000 applications and tested 20,000 applicants. Civil service regulations are on a regular basis reviewed. This year, we included five new regulations to improve bilingual testing, awarded additional points to Peace Corps volunteers to encourage people to complete volunteer service because that's somewhat similar to what we do here when you work for the city of Philadelphia. You're actually giving service to people. There were 23 civil service regulations that were revised in FY 16. We streamlined the classification process, reducing specialized classes which allowed us to create eligibility lists more quickly, reducing the time to hire. FY 16, there were 154 classifications and pay items have been approved by the Civil Service Commission and the Ad Board. Recruitment has continued to be a challenge for us and that we have not had a budget since 1990s. Despite this issue, we've been able to participate in 15 job fairs. In FY 16, we expect this number to double. We've actually been to churches, colleges, universities, technical schools, diverse groups including LGBT, veterans programs. We have monthly postings in terms of LinkedIn, Facebook, Twitter, media postings in Russian, Chinese, and French. In FY 16, we've established 45 jobs that require bilingual training. Year-to-date for FY 16 in civil service, we actually have recruited 821 minorities or 61.64% of those hired in FY 16 have been minorities. For exempt employees, FY 16, we've actually hired 160 minority exempts or 34.6% of those that are hired. So, one of the things that I'd like to also make mention of is during the testimony earlier this morning, Chief Administrative Officer, actually, and we talked about the open competitive test. And there were some questions about it from Councilwoman Cionas relative to it was an open competitive exam. And I wanted to make a couple of points of clarification relative to that exam to ensure that everyone, to ally people's spheres in terms of the actual testing process. So I'm going to call on Maria Agilakis to speak to that point.
Good afternoon, Councilperson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. Earlier this afternoon, there was a question about an open competitive test for the utility maintenance trainee class. And I believe the individuals who were asked were not really familiar with the exam announcement. So I'm going to provide some information on that particular exam announcement and the type of candidates that qualify for this exam. So the exam was announced for the water department. And although it is open competitive, the water department has a very diverse program where they recruit high school interns and provide the training to them. And then when those individuals have received the 450 hours of training, then they ask us to announce the exam. It needs to be announced open competitive because these high school interns are not permanent civil service employees. So, in this instance, the exam was announced. Four candidates were qualified to sit for the exam and they are currently on the list. Three of those have been certified after the department. The water department's program is actually a diversity recruitment program. So they go to local area high schools and increase diversment in their department through the use of this class specification. Currently, there are 16 employees in the water department. And as of, I believe, last month, the Department of Public Property also asked if they can use this class specification for their department as well. So this class is actually going to be appearing on the May civil service agenda with other requirements for the Department of Public Property, which their training program is 390 hours. So, I just wanted to explain that a little bit. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Councilwoman is obviously not here. You do me a favor, can you get to her office? Because she asked that specific question.
Sure.
Just kind of give her that.
Sure.
That'd be helpful. Thank you. A couple quickly. During the, over the last couple of months, there was some discussion about possibly changing some of the civil service regulations to give broader opportunities. As an example, in the Department of Recreation, there was this concern about the requirements for rec leaders, rec leader 1, 2, 3, and our inability to have people who actually, literally, have been members of the advisory councils for ages. And they actually, in a lot of instances, do more work at the rec center than the person that gets paid. And it was always, you know, by my mind, we had these regs, that person couldn't gain access. Are you a part of those discussions as relates to H.R. in changing some of the civil service regs?
I'm not really...
Your office, or...
So we would be part of those discussions, except I'm not really familiar with the scenario that you're presenting today.
Really?
No, we have not been involved in those discussions.
Alright, that's a little concerning to me, given what your role is, H.R., in terms of... Alright. In terms, you've kind of touched on a little bit about recruiting. And my assumption is that you're working closely with the Philadelphia School District?
Well, in the instance that Maria reported upon, we are the actual department, the commission is actually working with the school district. They helped them, they assisted them in identifying three specific schools in the city of Philadelphia that actually could be feeders for their apprenticeship program. So we're hoping that this will be the same for public property when they get on board with their apprenticeship program as well.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Mr. President, let me say good afternoon to each of you and thank you so very much for being here. Before I get started with my budget-related questions, I did want to just state for the record, I wanted to thank you, Ms. Green Jones, for communicating with my office relative to an issue that I won't get into today because we're going to specifically talk about it. We are going to introduce a resolution in City Council as it relates to calling for public hearings regarding the cancellation of the Real Property Evaluator III examination that was administered on August 26, 2015. And it was canceled pursuant to Civil Service Regulation 9017. And so, I know we have some more dialogue that we're going to continue to have and we're going to get as many questions answered the way I think we should respectfully attempt to between my office and yours. But I do want you to know that eventually, and pretty soon after we've answered those questions, we're going to have a public hearing about that issue here. So, but I promise that I wouldn't blindside you like, you know, some people do for the sake of 20 minutes or five minutes or whatever you call it. So, but we are going to have a public hearing on it.
We appreciate that and thank you very much.
Sure, and so with this in mind, let me go to my budget-related questions and start with one very near and dear to my heart. We heard from the police department and both LNI, the challenge that they have in terms of timing as it relates to getting employees hired in civil service positions. And I in particular, as it relates to the police department, you know, am constantly advocating for beat cops and bike patrols. So we know this is not new in terms of the length of time. Tell us what kind of things that you're sort of doing to improve that time to hire? And particularly as it relates to police and LNI. I know there are several reasons for it, but tell me, what are you doing particularly as it relates to these two departments to sort of improve outcomes?
I'll start off with answering the question and then I'll actually hand it over to Deputy Maria Agilakis. Initially, we've had several meetings with the police department relative to their hiring practices. Actually, it's been a very good discussion in terms of a way forward, in terms of trying to understand what their needs were and actually listening to them. Our most recent meeting was the week before last in terms of talking about a way forward in terms of some initiatives that they'd like to put into place. That has dramatically changed, so now we're on a different road. And I'd like Maria to actually talk about that.
Good afternoon. So as Marsha mentioned, we have met with the police department several times. A lot of the things we're looking at is to look at the requirements and where people are falling short. So we did provide an analysis to them. At the time, they were considering adding some requirements that would provide some flexibility. But I'm happy to report, as of this morning, the Civil Service Commission approved the police officer recruit changes that were announced in the media. And the new requirements are high school education only as well as 22 years of age at time of appointment. So, those changes were approved this morning. And hopefully, they will be approved by Ad Board next month. And in June, we will be announcing a new police officer recruit examination with those new requirements.
What about LNI?
So for LNI, we have, also this morning, we created two broadband classes for their inspector classes.
You were busy, you were busy today, huh?
We had a really busy day.
Yeah, right, you were moving today.
Last couple of weeks.
Yes.
So actually, the initiative for the broadband classes started last fall. We had some setbacks. And with continued talks with the union as well as the department and, you know, our new leadership, Marsha, has been very active in the resurgence of these classes. But we have established two classes this morning for the inspector levels that are broadband classes. So, for the first time, these classes require certifications within a certain period of time, 18 months and 24 months of appointment to the class. And we've expanded the pay range in the class so that these individuals in the class will be able to progress through the PISAPs, earn additional money if they secure additional certifications beyond what's required.
Please make sure that you give a timely update to the Office of the President to distribute to all of my colleagues, particularly all of them, but the district council members in particular, who are constantly advocating for those beat and bike patrol officers in neighborhoods and more patrols in our local districts. The hiring has been a challenge. And so please keep us updated so that when we are out in the community, we ultimately have to answer to our constituency about why we can't have more officers.
Sure, absolutely.
Aside from just the overall financial constraints. And that relates to the LNI employees also. My next question is in regards to the number of days, and I think you briefly referenced this earlier, about the days for producing civil service eligible lists at 65. And let me, is this business days or calendar days? Like, one of your main goals that I think you listed was that you wanted to, days for producing civil service eligible lists at 65. Is that business or calendar? How does that go?
These are calendar days.
Okay, so these are calendar days. Now, walk me through why it takes two months to produce the list. Tell me, what's the challenge?
Sure, I can go through the process. I can tell you that we have improved on this target. And I don't know if you recorded the numbers, but Marsha stated them earlier. So the days to produce a list in FY 08 were 85 days. Back then, we were still paper-based. And since then, we have implemented online application which has assisted with improving the eligible list dates. We've also improved the processes internally, streamlined a lot of things. Okay, so currently, we're at 42 days for the FY 16 period. One of the factors that drives that number up is the public safety exams by contract. We have to wait a period of time before we can test candidates for promotional exams. So for instance, for the written exam, if the bibliography is not changed, we have to wait 90 days from the time that we announce the exam to give the test. If we change the bibliography from the last time we gave the exam, we have to wait 120 days. So that number is going to drive, it's going to be higher because of the public safety exams that we give. In general, the processes, we're required to have job announcements open for two weeks for applications, to accept applications. Following those two weeks, we evaluate the applications. And depending on the volume of applications we receive, that could take a little bit longer than usual. Following the review of those applications, we are required to send the candidates who are not approved for the exam a disapproval notice. We also allow them a two-week period to respond to that disapproval if they want to submit additional documentation, supplement their information on their application. We need, you know, verbal. But eventually, we need a written explanation of their requirements, meaning education or experience, so that we can make a redetermination on their application. While this is all happening, we're still developing the exam. So we're meeting with the departments, talking to the subject matter experts, and developing the exams.
Now, you could have answered that question without saying the word "subject matter expert" to me.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to insult you.
And I am trying to be so disciplined right now by not going into this issue, but I understand, you know, you just struck a chord deep inside.
Okay.
Okay.
So the process...
We don't want to strike a chord.
Okay, I will not talk about the involvement with the departments, but they're really experts on the job, so we do need their assistance. So we're the experts on developing the jobs, but we need their knowledge. We need to pick their brain on the information.
I'm being facetious and I think you understand where I was going. In essence, what I want to say to you is that I appreciate and value the improvement, 85 to 42, in FY 16. But cities, municipalities, state governments across the nation are doing their best to implement efficiencies to improve this process. You know, and I always get frustrated when I hear people say that the private sector always does it better. But as we begin to streamline our process so that we can make municipal government more effective, I don't want us to even look at the FY 16 number. That's eight years and we're down to 42. So in essence, we've almost cut it in half and that's great, but we should not rest on our laurels as if we've done something miraculous. And we should be, you know, trying to figure out, how do we get it to 30, right? 30 days and continuing to reduce it. But I applaud the work that has already been done. Now, my next question, and Councilwoman, I don't see a whole bunch of people lined up, so I thank you, Madam Whip, for giving me, granting me the latitude.
Absolutely.
You know, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, she's going to talk, I'm certain, about the issue. She has taken the lead on long before I arrived regarding the issue of the rule of two. But I do want you to answer for me, if you will, particularly just from an H.R. perspective, why are the full staff salaries for women and minorities so much lower than they are for whites? And what can we do as a municipal government to change that dynamic and bring some parity as it relates to salary?
Well, I think a couple of things. One of the things that you see is we need to look overall. One of the, in the city of Philadelphia, most employees join the city as a career. So there's very little turnover. And what ultimately happens is employees stay in a particular area. Sometimes people are limited as a consequence of educational requirements for some of the jobs. I think because people see this as a career, people who started earlier on in their careers actually progress further. One of the things that we could encourage employees to do is to take advantage of the educational opportunities. We oftentimes in the city send out announcements about the opportunity for people to go to the universities that we've identified that have reduced tuition. We should perhaps engage in some mentoring programs because I think one of the things that is clear is that things are changing. We have employees who have been here for a very long time. Say, let's take the OHR for example. We have actually five, actually, in our population, we have employees actually who have been here less than five years, 33%.
So, Ms. Green Jones, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you just hit on exactly where I wanted to go. You just mentioned two things. Educational opportunities, for me, professional growth and development, right? And then you mentioned mentoring programs. And you talked about each of these from a perspective. Let me ask you this, and it's similar to a question that I just asked procurement. Is there a one-stop shop sort of document that employees in the city of Philadelphia can have that shows educational opportunities, mentorship programs, or any programs available for professional growth and development that they can apply for? And listen, compete to have the opportunity to participate. See, the issue for me is having access to the opportunity. And I'll tell you why. In some departments, just like in schools, if you don't have a good relationship with the principal and you're not one of his, you may not necessarily get invited to participate in the conference in your subject matter. If you are an employee in a particular department, if you don't have a special relationship with the right people, you may not necessarily get access to the opportunity. What are we doing to level the playing field to ensure that all employees, no matter what their rank, no matter what their level, if they work for the city and their particular department has access to any kind of educational advancement opportunity or other programs? Are we documenting those or putting them together? Or has H.R. recommended to departments that they submit to you, maybe given some sort of timeline and then you just compile it? Not that you could do the work, but requiring of departments? Is that something you've ever considered?
I think you asked a couple of different things in that question. I think the first thing is that from a global perspective, the answer is no. That's the first answer. I think from a departmental perspective, you will find, I think, and this is across the city, some departments are better than others. Some departments clearly have a distinctive career progression, a career path that employees can identify with, that they know what they need to get from point A to point B. From a global perspective, is this an opportunity for OHR? Absolutely, but also it's an opportunity for Chief Administrative Officer as well. We could certainly work with them because as you are aware from this morning's testimony, one of the things that they're responsible for is training and development. So working together as a group, certainly we can identify opportunities. We can certainly learn from some of the other departments that have put together programs. I don't know of a mentoring program within the city of Philadelphia, to be quite honest. Within our structure, I don't know of one. I was speaking, actually with someone here today, about a mentoring program a couple of weeks ago at another meeting. But there is an opportunity, I think, for us to look at it from a global perspective. No, there's no roadmap, but it's certainly something that we have an opportunity to look at, to talk about, to discuss, and certainly to plan a way forward.
I would hope, Ms. Green Jones, I would hope that H.R., along with our C.A.O., would find a way to get together, to work in a collaborative manner. And it would even be great if before we concluded these budget hearings, some sort of meeting could take place and you all will have begun to etch out the guidelines for, or some sort of timeline for getting together and establishing, again, a one-stop shop. I'm a directory kind of lady, right? Because I hate people having to go and search all over the place. I mean, we're the city government, we're huge, right? But if all of that information was compiled in a document that very simply from an organizational and structural perspective just says, "Contact the Commissioner's office in that department" and any educational advancement opportunities, and you yourself mentioned that some do it better than the others. So all of those who do it extremely well, why don't we ask them to serve as leaders for those who are not doing as well? See if we can get it and compile it and work in a collaborative manner to get that done. And I would really greatly appreciate that. And in addition to that, the last issue that I wanted to make mention of today, the testimony states that only 54% of employees citywide received an evaluation in 2015. Tell me, who owns that metric? Sort of like, who owns that metric? And is this the process that sort of rests with H.R.? And would you make improvements to that result? I'm trying to sort of understand that 54% of employees citywide received an evaluation in 2015.
That metric is something that is, unfortunately, OHR does, we own the data. That's probably a better way to state this. We own the data, however, we don't have the, we can influence commissions to actually perform, to write performance evaluations for their employees. We don't hold them accountable for that. Certainly, the performance evaluations are used for a lot of different things. They're a tool. They're a tool that we use for promotions, for career opportunities, et cetera. So the question is about getting, I think, the entire city on board. And it has to start from the top in terms of people being committed to writing a performance evaluation for their people, for delivering it on time, to ensure that people are evaluated so they know where they stand. This performance evaluation is a tool that we can use to give people feedback for developmental purposes, for training purposes. So it's a very valuable tool, but I think we need assistance. We need commitment from the top because that's where it has to start. So if your commissioner's not evaluating the deputies, then the deputies aren't going to evaluate their managers. The managers aren't going to evaluate their supervisors and so on. Every single person should have a fair opportunity to be evaluated based upon their performance because it is a tool that we use on a regular basis to determine, not transfers, but promotions, certainly.
So, Ms. Green Jones, let me tell you, I agree with you wholeheartedly. And the reason I asked the question is because when people think about evaluations, they're also a very strong tool for the employee. The employee, when they keep, when they have their evaluations, particularly if they're getting great ones and they have them on file, if the employee ever decided that it wanted to go work in another department to apply for a promotion, if, you know, on many occasions, which we don't hear about often, if they're attracted to the private sector and they're... and they're interested in moving there, that evaluation serves as an important tool for them. The only thing I would disagree with you on is the idea that I would wait for this to sort of happen from the top down. I would dare say to you that I believe that as HR for the city of Philadelphia, if HR determined that, you know, only 54% of employees citywide are receiving an evaluation in 2015, we need to increase that goal X percentage. And as the department, HR, sort of sends the recommendation to the administration, or that CAO that we just talked about, you potentially collaborating with. I don't think that it just has to come from top down. I think when we're collaborating, I think the top of the pyramid, because I, see, I'm one, I don't believe in the top-down strategy, right? Because for me, all of the great ideas, particularly in government, you know, politicians get it wrong all the time. We usually don't do anything right until we get pressure from the outside to get it done. So I believe in a bottom-up strategy. So although we have the executive here, I'm a firm believer and would support your efforts. If increasing that metric from 54% and establishing a very reasonable goal that is within reach 16, 17, and if you sent those recommendations to the administration, along with the one-stop shop for educational opportunities for professional growth and development, the mentoring that you suggested that I think is a wonderful opportunity, I'm almost certain that the top wouldn't be able to ignore those recommendations. And I would like to see what HR can do sort of on its own volition to get those done. You all have perhaps one of the most important jobs in the city of Philadelphia. You know, the city of Philadelphia, University of Pennsylvania, right? Our top employers. And we rely on you to help keep our system moving. We want to be supportive of you, but we also don't want you to feel so limited and constrained that we are not trying to be innovative and be public administrators who view themselves as public entrepreneurs. And I want our legislative branch to be, you know, as helpful as we possibly can. So while I'm making these recommendations, you all may say, well, you know, these are some things that we could do, but it would be great if council could assist us by doing X, Y, and Z. I'm saying we're here to be part of the process also. So please feel free to let us know how we can be helpful.
Actually, we will take that on, we will take that on board with our recommendation because, you know, half of the, half of the success is based upon your ability to influence people to get the job done. So at the end of the day, if we can utilize you to help us influence the process, we'll be glad to take you up on that.
But you just have to give us specific instructions.
Yes, we will give you specific instructions, yes.
Madam Whip, thank you so very much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, Council Lady. Very well stated. So let me underscore and punctuate a couple of suggestions she's made. I have interns in my office 500 days a year, and they're really only 365, because it's a unique opportunity for middle school and high school students and college students to see government up close and personal for all the reasons that we understand. Does the city have a policy with regards to allowing interns to be in the midst of professionals at all, a written policy around interns?
I'm not aware of a written policy, but we have a program.
Okay.
We have a program, actually.
Can I hear a little bit about it?
That we participate in. Most departments have the opportunity.
Okay.
My name is Brian Albert. I'm a deputy human resources director. There is a mayor's internship program where they actually place interns throughout various departments. They work on various projects for the departments. I think it's a great program. I think we've had a fair number of interns become employees because of their exposure to the, you know, the whole city.
So is this a summer intern program or a year-round program? Is it paid? Is it volunteer? What is it?
It's actually, I can speak to that because we've had interns for the last four years in my department. I'm generally the deputy for benefits, but I'm wearing a different hat. But we've had an intern for the past two years. They've been high school students that were juniors or seniors, and they actually have worked in the human resources department and they are paid interns. We have them across the city. The program is handled by, I think, it's handled by finance.
Is it?
Yes.
Can you get that information to the president so that council members can be made aware of that? That would be terrific. You mentioned that there are a few universities that the city has a relationship with whereby city employees can seize the opportunity for professional growth. What are those universities? Or who are they?
Brian Albert again. We can send you a complete list. It is on the website for the mayor's office of education. They have a returning to learning program. Most of the terms are the same. It's typically a 25% discount, but there are a few nuances. Some are related to undergraduate programs only. And as far as the one-stop shop, we often refer employees over to the office of education for the returning to learning program.
Okay. Very informative.
I think they also include returning to learning, not necessarily at a college level, but a sort of pre-college level for people who may be a little rusty with their skills. So they, and some of those programs are also available to citizens of Philadelphia. It's not restricted to employees.
Great to know. Great to know. Who do you report to directly?
I currently report to Marsha Green Jones, who is the acting personnel director.
Okay. And please?
I also report to Marsha.
Okay. Who do you report to?
I report to the Civil Service Commission.
Where, and so where's the link? Where's the bridge? Where's the interface with the Civil Service Commission and the CAO?
The link and bridge in terms of what we do on a day-to-day basis is when there are initiatives that there could be a collaborative opportunity, we liaise with them. The CAO function is somewhat new. We've collaborated on the recruitment for the Police Department. We've collaborated on, let's see, Fleet Management. We had a meeting with them regarding some opportunities there.
The demographics in Fleet are abysmal with regards to women and people of color, for the record. Continue.
Yes. So as opportunities arise, we also worked with the CAO on a Pew study. We also worked with them regarding the new orientation program. We've worked with that group as well.
So you, your department is at the table of the work group that we've heard about this morning? The work group with the CAO?
For the programs that I just mentioned, yes, we were at the table.
I see.
Councilwoman, if you don't mind, I think Fleet is coming on after us. They also have an apprenticeship program for high school interns.
That's one of the more remarkable programs across government
Yes.
that Fleet does well, and I know that from my first term here.
That's fine. I just wanted to highlight that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You mentioned that some departments are doing better than others. And we're going to say the rule of two discussion, dialogue, and debate for the hearing. We won't use that time now. But you say that some departments are better than others when it comes to having departments that look like the city of Philadelphia, which is prevailing wish for members of council. And so for those departments that don't meet that test in a way that we would like, what type of incentives? What type of, what does the supervisor or commissioner do to help those that they supervise understand that there's an expectation that government looks like Philly, more specifically, the top layer of government looks like Philadelphia?
Well, there is an opportunity to do, to have more dialogue with the department, certainly. One of the things that we are aware, one of the things that we know is there's an opportunity also to work more closely with the HR departments in terms of, there is a report in Oracle. They can go onto Oracle to pull up a report that has EEO information on a regular basis. So when they get ready to hire that next candidate, the HR manager can influence that hiring manager and say, these are our statistics, these are the people we have on board, and let's plan a way forward in terms of what we're planning to do. Because today, in today's times, I'm not sure that this is used as a tool. We're certainly able to pull up this information and we have statistics that tell us by department how many minorities there are from a civil service perspective and also from an exempt perspective.
Is that right?
So these same tools could also be utilized by departmental, on a departmental basis. So that's certainly a starting point to have that dialogue, to begin to talk about it. Maria has, twice yearly, has planning meetings for hiring with each of the departments. That's also an opportunity to talk to employees about, to talk to departments about their hiring needs because they're planning it for the future. So armed with that document, as well as talking about their hiring plans, they can certainly talk to what their plans are for the future in terms of meeting that diversity criteria.
Okay. Excuse me for cutting you off. How much better is the Water Department doing? And I asked that question because about three years ago, I asked for a demographic breakdown of the Water Department and I saw what I expected. So what improvement or changes have, has there been over there at the Water Department when it comes to?
I don't know what their statistics were in the past. Could we get back to you? Can we look at the, if you'd like to?
Absolutely.
We can look at FY14, 15, and 16.
See what the trends are.
And compare and look at the trends, if you'd like.
That would be terrific. That would be terrific. Okay, that concludes the questions and notes that I made. Anything else you care to offer?
No, nothing further at this point.
Thank you very much for offering your testimony.